See if we can get, we're a few minutes late, but we did pretty well. Lot of, lot of good individual work. In fact, I did one of the things, probably two, three things. I think maybe I have, just have a couple suggestions. Do you have something to say before we start?
So, the only follow-up, and Commissioner Woodbury is not here, but Damon did, Commissioner Woodbury made a request of you, and she may be watching, so this may get the question answered. It dealt with the relief factor and the staffing and so on and so forth.
So, during the presentation earlier about courthouse security, and so the sheriff is correct, that the number that CGL presented for what they call Model Five had a larger number of positions than we currently have. But it included a relief factor, which, which we don't generally do. And so if you take the relief factor out, it's the contingent equivalent of what we have today. And so, you know, when I explained that to Commissioner Woodbury, she wanted the sheriff's office to be here to kind of explain that or concur with that, that relief factor is in the number, that's the larger number. But if you take the relief factor out, they would be adequately staffed. Though that is a real thing, that people get sick and take vacation and get hurt. But what we have in the budget, based on deployment and posts, would be enough if relief factor was not an issue. So they added additional people in the event people are out. And that's why their number was bigger. But we don't have a relief factor in our recommendation, which is why we have the current number that's there today. And Captain Weidman was here, and Kimberly Bussie, the memo that I gave you, that she wrote if you have other questions about the relief factor.
Yeah, let me check and just see if Mr. Woodbury, she may be watching in her office. Just since she asked the question.
All right.
And while we're taking a recess, Chairman, if I can, while we wait on her, some of the things that I'd like for us to consider as well, or questions that I have, because the numbers have just kind of been spinning in my head. So, the sheriff was asking for, is it three or four, additional to the, because he's trying to get to a total of 11, correct?
That would be with the jit team, I believe.
Two. Oh, jit team, okay, got that. So, we're talking about the courthouse, he's needing additional, how many?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay. So, this is, this is, again, just some suggestions in my mind. We have 15 security guards already over at the courthouse. Three of them are CPOs that can relatively do the things that a deputy can outside of the courtroom, not house.
Yes, they have powers of the most.
Okay, I wanted to use that word. Of that, the 12 existing security guards are over there. And if it's possible with Allied to provide a listing of the cost of at least half of that, I'm thinking that we could get to at least six or 12 CPOs relative to the deputies, if that makes sense. I try to do it slowly so that I can make sure I'm convincing.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. The rest of the Allied security staff outside of the CPOs are civilians. And Damon could probably speak to this better than I can, but it's my understanding, they cannot get involved in anything. They're basically as a visual aspect of security.
The CPA or the general, or the security guard.
Not the CPOs, the civilians.
Yeah, got it.
The other 12 there.
Sure.
As far as additional staffing of CPOs from Allied, their, their area would be that, the common area where you enter lobby areas, and that's in any type of work area, such as in the clerk's office, where they have their workstations, if people come to handle their business. That's their, their areas where they're responsible for.
Right. And this would, again, equate to the need at the security, at the courthouse, correct?
Right.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to share that.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Mr. Woodbury, so Damon had sort of coordinated, responded to your questions that you had, attorney.
Right. So, so as we were talking about, when the sheriff spoke earlier, and he correctly noted that the consultant study has more staffing in it, you know, with the sheriff's office taking on both the screening and the courtrooms. But it includes a relief factor for people who get sick and are on vacation or get hurt. So there are additional people to account for when people aren't available. And so we generally don't do that at the county. So if you take that out, then it would be adequately staffed. But that is a real thing, that people get hurt, sick, you know, take vacation. And so I know you want me to bring somebody from the sheriff's office, and Captain Weidman is actually over the courthouse security part. And so he was able to come down and speak to the relief factor.
So, is there any consideration, thank you for coming back over here.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to make sure, because I believe in safety, and, and, you know, I think we would do more harm to the citizens if we say, well, we calculated that if we save this amount of money, it's worth somebody being hurt or dying, because we don't have adequate security. And that's a real thing, from my perspective. It may not be the opinion of others, and I, and I respect that, but I just want to be clear that the sheriff department is under the impression that even in consideration of the relief factor, it is the best option to keep us safe. So, in other words, you know, we understand that it's not generally for safe county policy that you include the relief factor. But if you want to have optimal safety, you have to consider the relief factor, because it can really impact the situation. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what is the impact or the consideration of the relief factor as stated by the deputy manager?
Well, currently, we have no built-in relief factor. I allow two people off at a time at this, the court security section, just because of our staffing issues. The current relief factor, because the staffing is so short, and in order to man the courtrooms safely and properly, I have to pull from my other section, which is the civil section of the sheriff's office. It's statutorily required, but I'm having to pull them over there, because when you have a courtroom, I'll just use District Criminal Court, for instance, all right? You potentially have 75 people in there that are attending court. There could be 250 to 350 cases called on the docket. Not all those people show up, they have representation. But when you have that many people, and you only have the staffing for, say, two deputies to be in there for the public that comes to attend, your elected official being the judge, the district attorney's office, and the potential of inmates coming in there. For us, we have to have at least one to two deputies. We should have at least one deputy. We should have two, for safety reasons, when we bring an inmate into the courtroom. We have to have someone that is responsible for the safety of the judge. And when you just have two people, who's going to handle that, when you have the responsibility of those two things in there? And then the crowd begins to break loose, if you know what I'm saying.
Yes, I do.
So, back to the, I'm sorry, back to the relief factor, like I said, I'm currently using from the civil section, and possibly other sections at times, depending on the need. We've had to send as many as seven or eight in a day, to spend the day there, just to get us through the day safely. And, yes, ma'am.
Are they, sorry to interrupt you, are the CPOs covered under that relief factor as well?
No, because they don't have, they're not trained, and they're not a part of the sheriff's office. Sheriff's office is statutory, they're required to handle the courts.
Okay.
They are not. They are just there for security purposes, again, of the lobbies and things of that nature.
Wait a minute, I don't think that you were hearing what I'm saying. So, the relief factor is factored in, is it the allied staffing, or is it with the sheriff's department?
It would be sheriff's office. Sheriff's office. So, basically, we have the contract with Allied for 15 people.
Okay.
And so they're supposed to provide 15 people.
Gotcha.
And so, basically, since it's a contractual obligation, they're expected to have 15 people. There's no, you know, they don't give 18 in case somebody's out. It's just, that's our contract, and so we try to hold them to that, although they fall where they have vacancies as well.
Gotcha.
So, let me ask, so, I mean, the, the busyness of the courthouse, you know, is one of those things that just fluctuates. And we did a lot of work, particularly when we were designing and working to construct it, and that, I mean, courts are, there are periods where there are very little activity in the courts. And, I mean, it sort of runs the gamut, and there's periods when, especially when they do that first call, there, it's very, very busy. How do you, what do you do, what do you do when there's just almost nothing going on in the courthouse one day?
Well, at that time, is when we actually have the staffing, the deputies available to go in and put them in a court and do it like we really want to be able to do it. Instead of just having one or two in that courtroom, now we, we have three to four deputies in there. And outside of the courtroom, keep in mind, we, we provide escorts for the DA's office, for defendants, for victims. We're continuously working with pretty much every division that is working out of the courthouse, not just those responsibilities in the courthouse. We're called upon for many things. Trust me, we are. And it's, it's hard to accommodate those things and show that, yes, we are here to help you when you're stuck, and you just don't have the staffing to do it. Lots of times, I may be dealing with something over in civil, and I'll get a call, the lieutenant over there is handling the day-to-day, and I may have to come over to speak to a judge, or someone at the DA's office, you know, what the matter may be for an upcoming murder plea, or trial, or something like that.
And Captain, is it fair to say that the allied security don't help in the courtroom, but you all do help in the courthouse from time to time if there's a disturbance?
Oh, we do. We do. There are plenty of times where arrest alarms have been made, or we just hear the commotion, someone's leaving from court, we hear the commotion, and as long as the judge is good, we know we can get them out of there, we will go and we will assist. We've made number of arrests, citations, any of that type of stuff. We provide security checks. Another part that we do, when courts are down and we have the staffing available, we will do perimeter checks, checks of all floors, checking in with staff to make sure they're good, there's nothing that they need to report to us, that they just haven't been able to throughout the day. So, we, we stay busy all day long. There's, there's training, there's administrative duties that we have to handle once we are cleared from the court, and most of the time, that's at the very end of the day, which is five o'clock.
Yeah. So, Damian, for me, Dudley, if you don't mind, what I need in my decision-making, I'm physically responsible. So, I would need to know if Allied had the capacity to transition some of those security guards into CPOs, and what would that look like in terms of cost? What would that look like in terms of their recruitment? Do they have staff in queue? If they were to transition, you know, how fast could that be? So, the totals amount, the total amount would be important for me to have moving forward.
So, what's the delta between the cost of a guard and a company police officer?
A guard, a guard and the CPA. I'm going to use that, not the deputy. I already know what that is, right?
Right. And then their ability to acquire.
Well, their roles and responsibilities outside of the courtroom. Only the courthouse responsibilities. Thank you.
Afternoon, Commissioners. I got a couple of texts while this was going on. I just wanted to remind you also, and speaking of the duties at the courthouse and all that, you also have to take into account that, you know, anytime throughout the day when courts are up, that judges do have us arrest folks, or there's, there's either warrants on them, or a judge puts them in custody or whatever. And that takes a deputy out of that courtroom to escort them downstairs, to process them, paperwork and all that. And so you've got to have someone to get back in that courtroom in order to staff it appropriately. So, those are, those are considerations that have to be taken in. You know, when you say, you know, the courts are not always as busy, there's always those other things. And we are taking in a lot of people that, you know, are just coming to the courthouse and don't realize that they're going to be arrested while they're there. So, there's that, that factor as well.
That's definitely helpful.
Yeah.
To know. However, in what I'm hearing from you, in their statutory obligations, you do, you can't use a CPA in a courtroom.
Correct.
I got you.
Correct, yes.
And right now, you're working with about two, one to two, right? And you need three to four.
Two if we're on a good day.
Yeah, I got you. All right.
It's three to four on some days.
Yes, sir. Depending on which court it is, yes, sir.
Yeah. And I think that's the kind of, that's the kind of data that, that sort of makes this meaningful, because we don't have a, a chart that shows us on, here's six months of data, that says, this is how many days, this is how many courtrooms were in action during that day. And I'm, so I, I think if we had those kind of things, well, maybe somebody might convince me of that. And, and also, if we had to like the number of people who get arrested, yeah, certainly a judge, because that person needs to be arrested, and misbehavior. I mean, are we talking a dozen a month? Are we talking 50 a month? Are we talking one a month? I mean, what, what kind of frequency are we talking about, that we need to have someone, you know, I understand capacity, the available ability to respond, all those kind of things. And I would also think that once it spills outside the courtroom, this may be getting at what Commissioner McDaniel was talking about, is that when it gets outside the courtroom, the CPOs are capable, and I think if I understood her comment, was that if a few of the guards were swapped off for the extra money, and we, our contract with them was for more CPOs with arrest authority and carrying a gun, that once it spills outside the courtroom, they're also available, you know, to provide safety.
Oh, yes.
Do you see what I'm getting at?
Definitely. And I can, we can definitely provide you with monthly, weekly statistics for the things you were just talking about. And as far as the CPOs outside of the courtroom, yes, they, they have the powers of arrest, and they should be. If something's going on, they should be responding and handling the situation. But if we see it right there with us watching, we're obligated to go out and assist or take control of it right from the very beginning.
I thank you for all you do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions about that particular issue? Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Commissioners.
Yep. So, in turn, I mean, I, I just, well, you can say, finish what you're saying, and then I'll just.
I was just going to say, Kyle, there's no more housekeeping from, that we need to do, is there?
Housekeeping, I mean, I didn't get one, one, oh, yeah, one option.
Okay. Say that, say that again, Kyle, what?
I got one, I did, I did receive one.
Option. I did receive one option from, from board members.
You need this kind of stuff?
Yeah. Correct, sir. And so, just to go over, at your, whenever you guys are ready, so.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've got mine. I, I was, okay.
We have additional questions for the schools. Tricia, is it possible to send it through you, Dudley, so that we, I have one specific question relative to pre-K?
Okay.
And if I could send that off to her, and she could respond back. I think we had some questions. Commissioner Bessie, Commissioner Woodbury, because I don't want to speak just for myself, unless they have something else that they wanted to, okay, from us, we have some questions.
Yeah, we can, we'll make sure they get the question. I do think Tommy's going to be here tomorrow, so.
Tommy, you'll be here at nine o'clock tomorrow.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, maybe we could spend a minute and talk about, and talk about actual school requests, which is a big one, and we've spent a lot of time talking about it. And I, this, I've had some discussion with several, I think probably three of you at some level. And I just want to get at an idea that actually is, what is predicated on, I think it, I think it helps solve some of the thorny issues of, of school needs. But it, in order to make it work, it requires moving the computer refresh over into Pago. And if we can move that, which if I divided the school district's number correctly, it's 2,071,858, 2,071,858. If that money were moved over, for example, into a Pago item one time, not recurring, I want to emphasize that, not recurring, just like the, the radio purchases, not recurring. And then the, the money that the actual dollar value that was or is recurring in the county manager's budget recommendation, that, that recurring amount would grow by that 2,071,858. And I did send for clarification an email, actually over the weekend, to Tommy about his benefits calculations. And the benefits calculation is actually overstated by at least 385,000. So, if you add the 385,000, and that comes from retirement match has been reduced. And I just literally did the calculation and did it. I mean, just take his amount, he said he needed for the 4% raise, I divided 4% to that number to get how much of the money you're talking about, and then reduced it by approximately a percent, which ends up being $385,000. So, that 385 and the, and the 2,071, which was the, the Pago portion, is actually leaving in the recurring amount. the recurring amount of money from the manager's recommendation, basically $2,450,000. That amount of money would be sufficient to actually fund, it would actually fund the full request for the social workers and the nurses and the pre-K teachers. It requires no more, no tax increases, no anything. It just requires moving some money that's in recurring into non-recurring and replacing it with some different items. So, that part, if, I mean, that seems to meet a lot of the needs that have been described. Now, the one piece in there, I have no problem supporting the $500,000 for the 2% classified additional, you know, this is on top of the 4%, and it's some groups that were not covered last year, and Tommy could talk more about that tomorrow. But again, until we, until, since we're into this every year, I still think the market study request that was made a year ago and never fulfilled might be reasonable to withhold the half million until such study, which has been started and not finished, is completed and shared with us. That is a very reasonable suggestion, but it would withhold $500,000 this year instead of a million. The million's gone from last year.
It goes about to 230,000.
Well, it's not, well, I don't believe we're going to have a study by June 30th here. We ain't had one all year. I'm not going, I'd hate to try to hold my breath till that arrived.
Well, in all fairness to you, the superintendent, the chairman and vice chair, I did have a conversation with them, and they seem to believe that they could get that information to us before the end of the month. However, we have something that we'd like for you to consider if that does not happen, but we'll talk about that later. Thank you.
Right. And I realize talking through what I talked through may not be very clear, but it's essentially the same amount of money in recurring dollars that the county manager recommended. It adds additional Pago dollars to cover the computer refresh. That's the heart of it.
As I understand it, of that money, save from moving the $2,000,000 to Pago, the money for the five nurse positions would go to the public health.
Yes, yes. The, I said the nurses, but the nurses would be into public health, and those dollars would just go from, well, hadn't left our budget yet. It would stay in our budget and support the nurses, and they would not get that, but they would get the nurses. They would get the equivalent of the nurses, is what they would get. Thank you for clarifying that.
But it would cover the 10 social workers plus the pre-K.
Yeah, and the pre-K part, too.
However, well, I'll wait. So, Dudley, what I was wanting to do was to have a conversation with the school board relative to their fund balance. And God knows, I love pre-K. My grandchildren are in a place where she's getting ready to transition to pre-K, and it's very, very important to me. But if there's any way that they could consider the pre-K education coming out of their fund balance, so that we can appropriately support some other things, for example, their master's degree supplement and maybe some of the custodial services as well.
I guess if we're.
That's an offering.
I hear what you're saying. Obviously, that would be a possibility. It's just, if we're line item supporting, I would never support the custodial part. Not going to support the custodial piece. And that's, I would suggest to the school board the same thing that we did. We're having trouble with quality on our contract cleaning. We split the contracts into smaller, two smaller bid packages.
Well, I wasn't.
They need to try some of those things.
I know that we couldn't do the whole $2,000,000, but again, the custodial services was just a suggested option, that's all. But I definitely wanted to make sure that we took care of our nurses, and we do have a solution for that. And then, the total act for the social workers as well. And there's a little bit, I don't want to be the one that's talking, because it's not only me, it's a collective of at least three other, two other commissioners, who wanted to look at the master's degree supplement. And I will, if I could yield the remaining of my conversation to Commissioner Woodbury, she can communicate better than I can about the teacher supplement. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, to the point of the additional teacher supplements, I think that it would be beneficial if the school district could work with us to figure out that part next budget cycle, since we'll have a re-eval at that time and have more options to try to increase teacher supplement. Of course, everyone knows that in my perfect world, I would be supplementing teachers right now with snap of my fingers. And if there were three other votes to support it right now, it would be done. But that's not the world we live in, and so, we're trying to really brainstorm with the school district and the community to figure out how to get to where ideally we need to be to support public school education optimally, not, you know, at least, but optimally, is what I would say. And then, lastly, as relates to the master's degree supplement, I think that, you know, at least on this commission, there are three commissioners that, you know, would like to support half of that $1,000,000 with $500,000, but would definitely encourage the school district to put skin in the game with a fund balance for the other million, I mean, for the other $500,000, excuse me, and to think strategically, I think, around how to leverage, whether it is all of the $1,000,000 or the $500,000, to optimize the master's teacher pay. So, for example, a master's teacher pay for one-year teacher is not the same. I would reasonably put on the table as someone who has been working five years, having been grandfathered in to receive it. So, because you cannot, you know, accommodate every single person with the master's pay, you have to make some decisions on what's the best way to optimize and leverage what you do have. And I think that that could be a strategy, again, you know, brainstorming with the school district, with, you know, some of us, and hopefully, ideally, all of us at the commission to do what's right for public school education.
And in addition to, we also wanted to add the productivity portion of it as well.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Excuse me, you add the what?
Productivity. So, it doesn't mean that even though that you're getting the master's degree supplement, you should have to show where you're moving the needle for the community that you're, the children that you're teaching.
I would be very interested in, I mean, they have a number of teachers now that have a master's degree. I'd be real, and I'm sure it's the number that teaches tested courses. It'd be an interesting random sample of people who don't have a master's degree and a random sample of people who do, and take a look at those, and take a look at their test scores. That's, that is the rationale that got it out of the state budget. That's the rationale that got it out. But you can see, I mean, assuming that, we had one of our speakers last night talk about the number of additional states around us that pay something for additional degrees. And most of them did. And I suspect that's probably true, and they haven't got into that, that kind of study. But, I mean, the state's got that data, and that's why they, that's kind of why they did away with it. I think the problem we have now, I have a much bigger problem, that some people are grandfathered with it and some people don't. And we had a teacher last night said, you know, it could be your next-door neighbor has a master's degree and is getting a master's degree supplement. You had a master's degree, and you've been teaching 10 years, and you're not getting it. I mean, it's just that, now, that inequity is more bothersome to me because they both have the same credentials, and the state allowed everyone to grandfather out. I'd be real curious how long it's going to take the state to get, how long till those work through to retirement in 30 years? The number's getting smaller every year. That'd be another interesting piece of information. I'm interested in compensating teachers. I'm not necessarily, I don't necessarily believe that seat time in a master's program is the thing that's going to move the needle, so to speak.
I think it has to do with pound-for-pound experience, and that is why we are very intentional about thinking, you know, first to three-year teacher, then five to seven, then 10-plus, because experience means something. I would tell you that my first year as a teacher, I probably should not have been allowed to return, but somebody said we would give her another chance. It was a work in progress with a master's, two masters, as a matter of fact. So, there is, you know, worth, and I think any professional educator that is committed to the work know that even with additional degrees, until you go into the classroom and have the experience over and over, do you become that real master teacher. So, it's not that we're trying to, you know, go down the path of, you know, merit pay and all of that. It's just based on how we value the profession and making sure that teachers that have proved themselves in the field of education by staying in it long enough to become a quality teacher compensated.
I agree with that. So, is there?
There's another option on the table.
All right.
Kyle, could you present it, please? And with this option, you get to pretend that we are not the General Assembly. We are county commissioners and not the General Assembly.
So, the option that is on the projector overhead that you just received essentially is the manager's recommended budget, along with the adjustments that we went over this morning. It includes the sheriff's office rural hall mini-cop program, and so, it increases expenditures and revenues by that amount. And then, it reduces the tax rate back to the FY '24 rate of 67.78, which would reduce our revenue by a little over $2 million. It appropriates the remaining inflation contingency for the '22 Pago at 713,990. And then, it basically appropriates some additional fund balance of $1,387. And so, it is a, again, the tax rate is 67.78. The total budget's 581,374,789. Appropriated fund balance would be $17,129,347. And then, the additional, the funds that are still, you know, set aside for, to be allocated, special appropriations and such, is still in the budget to be allocated.
So, would you like to tell me which fund balance the $1,367 is coming out of?
The one, yeah, that would just, it would be from unassigned fund balance. It is general fund balance in the county.
I didn't know we were going to put that, if we can put that option on the table, we could reduce taxes.
Sure. I mean, yeah.
We could do more and reduce taxes. But that's been pretty sacred. I'll just have to mention that now. You're opening a different door when you open that door.
So, appropriate $17 million fund balance, so it's, again, it's higher than the $15 million. That $17 million would still be the target for reversion, so we would be looking for more reversions next year. It would be, but you're correct. I mean, it is appropriating more fund balance.
It would kick the can some. And remember, there is a, there's a, there's a tax increase going into next year's budget of over, to make up the $6 million any, as well. And so, it could potentially add to that. That takes away from the resource that could be taken from it next year. I mean, I understand it. I got it.
Yeah.
It's just opening a door we have typically not opened before. I just kind of wanted to just throw that out there.
Well, I think it's because we know we have re-eval next year. I think it's very unfair to give the taxpayers a tax increase this year, no matter if you all think it's small. There's some folks that will not think it's small. I think with inflation, groceries, gas, everything, this is something that we can do for our population this year, knowing that next year is going to be re-eval, and we'll have far more funds coming in.
What's the current tax rate again right now?
In the '25 recommended budget?
No, right now.
It's 67.78.
We're at 67.78?
67.78 cents is the current tax rate. The '25 recommended budget increases that to 68.23. And then, this plan would reduce it to 67.78. I mean, it would, it basically reduces, this plan reduces the tax, eliminates the tax increase that's in the recommended budget.
Okay. Yeah, that's.
So, it would keep the tax rate flat.
Okay, thanks.
As I, if I may ask, Vice President Whitson, this would allow $286,786 for all adjustments to the, to the county manager's recommendations, ASL requests, which, as I understand it, technically speaking, include anything that departments are requesting, the, what the school system is requesting, and the totality of special appropriations requests.
It's zero special appropriations.
It's zero special appropriations?
Leaves 286, you got $286,000 to do either alternative service requests for departments or special appropriations, zero special appropriations.
Okay.
Plus the additional $1 million that we have in the budget. In the recommended budget, there, in special appropriations, we have.
Well, that's in the 1.7 that's in there.
That's correct.
The 1.7 that includes kind of those legacy ones and the others. So, it's 1.7, it's actually in that budget and still leaves that in there.
That's correct.
But other, other adjustments, including departmental adjustments and the school systems requests, would all be squeezed into 286,000, you know, and change.
Well, if you did anything beyond the county manager's requests, it would have to be.
Yes.
And if you did any, in fact, I just went through this, I actually have two of the alternative service requests actually that I would be interested in, small amount, $102,000. I mean, but, but yeah, if we're opening up that door, that's a door possibly could be, could possibly be done.
Commissioner McDaniel, just to, you know, I apologize for the confusion, but in special appropriations, we have $1,740,585 that is, that is, we have it in a payments to other agencies' lines. It's not allocated.
Say that again.
It's not allocated. We have not, we've not put it, earmarked it to any specific agency or organization.
My list appropriates 1.6 of that.
Okay.
And if, if there's 250,000, I have 250,000 I want to use out of, out of Pago.
And so, what I'm saying is.
250 out of Pago and 1.6 out of the other.
In this, in the option that's here.
That's cheap.
That money, that $1,745,85, it's just, it's not allocated, you know, and so, it's up to you. It doesn't zero it out.
Yeah, you're correct. Correct. Thanks for saying that.
May I ask, is the intent of the Whitson-Limble option to preclude a move such as Chair Martin was suggesting of flipping $2 million into Pago and reallocating? was, was suggesting of flipping $2 million into Pago and reallocating for other expenditures the savings from that?
That was not something we discussed because we didn't know that Eric Martin was going to suggest that.
But it's, it's not in there, but it's not precluded by your proposal.
Yeah, it was a money's money issue. Kind of money's money, which is, which?
We didn't discuss it because we didn't know that that was going to be his suggestion. So.
So are you okay with his suggestion?
As long as it does not mess with my tax inquiry.
I just missed something.
Thank you. Isn't that right?
And the one thing that I'll say, actually, as I, as I went through this, I realized we still have this 286.786 up here. I believe that's not, so this fund balance appropriation, I believe, would be reduced by that 286. I think, I just needed to double check.
I think that's.
That's about.
Because that's in a reserve, and so I'm not doing anything with that reserve below.
I think that's additional, because that actually, yeah, it allows an additional 286 to be spent that's undesigned. So it adds to the 1.7s.
Right. Either that, or you could reduce the fund balance.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Hmm. So I, so I kind of, I mean, everybody, I'm sure nobody does it the way I do it. So, I mean, just the way, the way people think. I mean, it's just the way people think. I almost need, I can't do this sitting here. I have to go sit by myself for a little bit.
Would you like to take a break?
That'd be great. In fact, I could probably do it in 30 minutes.
Okay.
Take a 30-minute break? We're okay with that?
Yes.
I need just 30 minutes because?
Am I right?
You need more?
I think we can get it done.
I think I can do some, I just need to think through a couple things. It's thrown in, yeah, it's thrown an additional $1,300,000 in that was not in my original thinking. So that's, yeah, that may be, that may be possible. Okay, does it go 30 minutes? Is it okay?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks.[749.88]
And time to sort of encapsulating our not as brief conversation.
Sure, so I thought I'll just go over the three different options that that we've seen. And so the first one, again, just to restate, it's it was from Commissioner Wizzenhut, Commissioner Linville. And so again, it kept the manager recommended budget as well as all the adjustments.
Ashley, can you get that on the, yep, no worries.
All right. And so it keeps the the adjustments that we talked about this morning. And it includes 286,786 that is available for additional alternate service level requests if there's something you wanted to do. But it appropriates the Rural Hall. It includes funding for the Rural Hall Mini Cop program for the Sheriff's Office. And then it reduces the tax rate, you know, to maintain the tax rate of the FY24 budget at 6778. So it reduces property tax revenue of $2,595,36. We are appropriating additional contingency from the 22 Pago CPO and then increasing fund balance by 1 point, almost 1.4 million dollars. And so keeping the tax rate at 6778 and fund balance appropriated is 17,129,347. So that was the first option that we had. Then we have the Commissioner Martin's option, which essentially follows Commissioner Wizzenhut and Commissioner Linville's plan exactly the same, everything, all these numbers are the same. And so, but it does, you know, kind of make clear that special appropriations will be allocated, you know, tomorrow and it would not exceed this 1,74585, which is the amount of money that we have set aside in a budget reserve for special appropriations. And then just as a note, some there, we could appropriate some additional fund balance for potential Pago items, capital campaigns, computer replacement for Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. So, you know, Dr. Martin had had mentioned using Pago for the computer replacement for Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools and then allowing the schools to keep that, you know, extra $2 million to appropriate and cover additional things within their budget request. It would cover the pre-K, it would cover the 10 social workers, I believe. And so if we appropriate additional fund balance, really what we're doing is we're, you know, so the 1.387 would go, would increase if we if we do anything else. We're really just, you're essentially reducing the amount of Pago that we may have available when FY24 closes. And we would have a target not to exceed, you know, so right now, again, under the Wizzenhut-Linville option, fund balance was at 17.1 million dollars. The target would be not to exceed $20 million of appropriating fund balance. So just just around $3 million. And so, again, these planes are very similar. Tax rate remains the same. And then this really is just kind of setting aside some or clarifying some some language around some potentially appropriating more Pago, which again, or, you know, which, I mean, by appropriating more fund balance, you're you're essentially appropriating Pago money in the future, from the future. So that's what we're doing there. And then the third option is Commissioner Woodbury's option. And so again, keeps everything from beginning what we talked about this morning. Commissioner Woodbury's option would would fund the the JIT team for the sheriff. It would provide five school nurses to public health. It would fund the Trailblazer Promise for Forsyth Tech. For the schools, it would provide, you know, a million dollars for the master supplement, pay for the the pre-K program, 1.3 million, and 10 social workers at 800,000. It would approve a security guard at the library for 39,000. It would approve the general services ASL that would essentially, you know, increase expenditures and also have some some offset expenditures elsewhere. But it would help the, it would it would provide some three deputies to the to the Sheriff's Office in that in that regard. You would, it also includes additional 401K to go up to 5% for all employees. So it costs a 2.6 million and provide the Juneteenth holiday 103,039. And this is, this is funded with the with an increase in the tax rate from, really from the 68 to 3 tax rate that's in the recommended budget up to 70.5. And fund balance would remain the same. And just as a, you know, the impact on a of a tax increase from 6778 to 70.5 would be 5440 for, you know, a year for an annualized cost of $54.40 on a $200,000 house. And so those are the three options that we have. And then, you know, it's a, it's a, again, in all three of these options, there are, the the allocation for special appropriations has not been addressed. And so you guys would have that decision to make tomorrow as well.
I would just like to, if I made Dr. Martin, just thank the commissioners for a very robust conversation around getting to the tail end of this budget. From my perspective, I'm really being very serious based on what I think government should be able to do ideally for the good of the whole in light of, you know, having a great experience getting to a version of the budget that I think is very plausible for the citizens of Forsyth County based on the overwhelming support yesterday for public school education. So I am only reflecting what I heard yesterday. The citizens are saying that we're willing to do as a whole to support public school education, obviously, to support public safety, and to support county staff. Right? We all have to give a little to meet the good of the whole. And I think as we think about a reeval for next year, if this is, it seems to me an opportune time to increase taxes for one year. And we know what the cost would be if your house is at $200,054 for the year extra, which is a dollar and 6 cents a month. That's real time dollars coming out. And I don't want to minimize that because with that dollar and 60 cent, you could definitely a month get a cup of coffee. And I'm a coffee drinker, so that is an expense for me. But I am willing to sacrifice the cup of coffee per month to make sure that we support one public school education, support our county being safe, and to support the workers of this county who do a great job, starting with the leadership of Dr., not Dr. Dudley Watts, our county manager. Maybe he'll go and be a doctor after this, after this experience. Thank you.
Are you comfortable with a dollar, six, or eight a week? Because it's a week, not a month.
Week, 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 week.
A week. That's a couple of weeks. It gets a little harder.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm social studies, not math.
May I ask, with the with the Martin option, would it be your intent, Mr. Chair, to put forward the the switch arounds within the appropriation for the school system that you had laid out earlier?
Yes. And that that's what that last sentence is about, that that last, last paragraph. Additional fund balance could be appropriated for potential Pago items such as, I've got three small in my list, three small, it's a total of $250,000 for capital campaigns, and then the 10,100 and whatever, 2,077,000 for the for the computer refresh. And then that essentially becomes a larger number on the amount for the available target for reversions to 20 million. That's what it gets at. Which, which if it doesn't, it just, it means your Pago is a little smaller. It takes away from Pago for the future. It does that. And you got, it's just a, it's an option we've typically not done. That was my comments earlier. But in doing that, there, that's a clear way to do it. But it's still the same thing I mentioned before. It would allow the money to do the new nurses that would be go to the county, allow the money to do the social workers. In fact, I did, when I went privately and did it, the difference is eight, it's only, it's an $85,000 differential. I did the exact sort of calculations, about 85,000. That's close in that in that deal. So it's, it was 85,000 more than those two numbers. But that's kind of right at it. I believe you remember Tommy said he could make the social workers work for a half a million, not the full amount. This is the full amount. So I suspect he can make that work.
And it continues to include the 2% for classified, but you're requiring a
Yes.
a market test.
Right, to finish that. Yes. So on Commissioner Woodbury's list, it actually includes the five school nurses, it includes the pre-K, and it includes the 10 social workers are included in that paragraph discussion.
And I believe you indicated also the the pre, yeah, I'm sorry, you said the pre-K. Okay, thank you.
So Chairman Martin, if you you would allow me to hold your feet to the fire, sir, relative to the additional fund balance appropriations in Pago, I would like you to outline that for me before tomorrow.
I will. That's easy.
Yeah. And then also with the special appropriations, if you could outline as well, I think that we are on the same page relative to Chair, Vice Chair Wizzenhut. We agree, not to agree, but I surely agree on your strategy this year. And I sincerely appreciate it, knowing that I represent a district in District A that cannot afford a tax increase. I ran on maintaining that tax, the taxation in my district. And I know that there are some that can't afford and have come forward to talk about a tax increase, but nobody that looked like me or that came from my district. So in knowing that, I have to, again, to be physically responsible for my roles and responsibilities as a Commissioner, Commissioner Woodbury. I appreciate, again, your advocacy for the schools. And I think that we do have a relatively, we do have a plan that we all have consent, have a consensus relative with. So on tomorrow, if I can get that from Dr. Martin, I think that I'll be okay. Thank you.
Well, just to be real quick, yeah, it's basically tomorrow is to look through this. There's a deal with this issue tomorrow. And I think Kyle's got several of these from us. I gave mine to Kim. And that would, that'll be a part of a basis discussion because I'm sure there's some disagreements on that. And that's where some of those identified is picking. I'll identify the, there's three, and there's one with a to be determined on Horizons Care. Got a little information to double check on their, where their budget is on their construction project for those two residential units that are refunded.
Right. And real quick, in all fairness to me, when am I going to be able to see the information that I asked for about the Sheriff's Department CPO, I think that's what they called it? When will I get that information back before tomorrow?
So I will reach out to Kirby. I actually have the information on the the delta between the CPO and a guard. And then I'm going to reach out to Kirby about the availability, likelihood of hiring additional company police officers.
Okay. And then the second act was to have a conversation with the school board and the superintendent relative to the pre-K and their fund balance. I know Chairman Martin said that it was in hours. But again, if we can have some conversations around that, I think that would be helpful for me.
Sure.
And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Did they give, when they made their budget presentation, I don't recall the school district, I'm just following up on Commissioner McDaniel. Did they mention their anticipated fund? They did. Their anticipated fund balance for the end of the year, it wasn't in writing or in their handout, but my memory, 12, 14 million, something like that.
I think that that does sound
Somewhere in that. And Tommy is going to be here in the morning.
He will be here in the morning. He'll be here at nine o'clock.
He can verify my my benefit recalculation piece. And he can also, which I sent him an email already, but he can also verify that fund balance piece because that answers part of your question about part of your question about, yeah, if the 12 million is right, if I'm right on remembering that, my memory's right, then 12, there's obviously money to do some of those. And just like there's already an ask to match half the computer refresh out of it already. Yeah, so I think tomorrow is, Tommy's here, and the first thing, we have to talk about schools with him while he's here, move on. Then we'll move into shoring up anything because we've got alternative service requests of 286,000 in this proposal. And we have the $1,740, whatever it is for the special appropriations. So that's the work. I think we got a framework. It's a matter then to work down, to work out the details.
I just wanted to, lastly, add, Dr. Martin, because I was going to just make this point before you started to wrap us up, to, lastly, just to reiterate the temperament of the citizens to make a one-year sacrifice for possible tax increase in order to support public school education. And I say that with, again, all sincerity and in response to Commissioner McDaniel's point that, you know, I don't think any of us elected to, you know, try to burden the citizens with, you know, taxes. But I want us to talk very real about what it means for us to make the sacrifice for the good of the whole, especially around public school education. So for example, I'm a District A resident, obviously, and my house is worth less than $200,000, and it's less than $100,000. But let's just do the basic math, $100,000, right? And that's half of 54, $25. And so we could just, so $2 a month, 52 cents a week. We could make the point over and over again reasonably, what is the sacrifice in order to make the best investment to get a return, to make this county the best that we can possibly make it? The one-year sacrifice, I would just put before any of the commissioners, whether it's District A, B, at large, is the sacrifice of something now, what we really should be doing in order to make, you know, a better county later. So I do look forward to getting information from Mr. Burris, our tax collector, about the homeownership in District A because the last time, again, I looked at the data, there was definitely, you know, a concern that I have with a lack of home ownership and outsiders owning a lot of homes in the District A area, having a lot of, I would say, absentee landlords. But, you know, that's something that I think, you know, we all should be very mindful of, whether you're in District A or District B. But I think that it is a point to consider. Thank you.
So Commissioner Woodbury, if I could just suggest to you or argue with you that the tax implication is not just a one-year tax implication, that's moving forward. And whatever we decide today, or whatever we decide in our budget deliberations, this will carry forth to next year when we're having a revow, which would, again, it's a possibility to have an increase in taxes, again, on our constituency. And we talk about, you know, we live in a district where we have food insecurities. You have individuals that are struggling with affordable housing. And $24 or $22 or any amount of money is a burden on our constituents, and we know that. So I just would ask you to go back and probably consider, once you get that report from John, in terms of trying to just kind of maintain what we already have. I understand, and I feel your passion. But I believe that we can make consensus through Pago, our fund balances, axing our school systems to help participate in the acts. I think that it will yield what we're looking for.
So this will be my last point, that strategically, if we know that there's going to be a revow next year that would drop the tax rate and help us to reset, the strategy right now is there's an increase next year. Obviously, it will not be the same amount as a county. We are always trying to make sure that there is an appropriate and lower tax rate. So it, we could, but I don't think that's our point, that because there is the revow next year, that's going to be the most opportune time for us to lower tax rates. So why not strategically make the sacrifice this year? That's the whole point around the strategy. I see where you are coming from, you know, with the reservation, again, around, as I'm sure we all are, you know, in reservation around tax increase. But I want us to be, as a matter of fact, making the point around how it impacts District A with our reality. So if you don't own property as relates to homes, then their lives, you're not invested in that way. Now, that doesn't mean you don't pay taxes just by way of buying goods, and that's a burden on people who obviously don't make enough money, like our teachers, like all of the other essential workers. And that's what we're trying to reconcile with making an investment even at the local level. We know it needs to come at the state level to support essential workers like our teachers. But I, you know, fully respect everyone's difference of opinions. But I would be remiss if I didn't say, if you don't invest in public school education, you are on borrowed time as a community.
Mr. Chairman, if I may offer a reminder to the board before tomorrow's discussion regarding special appropriations, I know you're aware of this, but I have to say it every year. The state statute, North Carolina General Statute's 14-234.3, which makes it a criminal misdemeanor for any commissioner to discuss, advocate on, or vote for a contract or a grant with any board of a nonprofit on which that commissioner serves. So I'll just remind all commissioners about that before tomorrow's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. Any other comments that need to be made before we adjourn till tomorrow morning? All right. We'll see everyone at 9:00 AM back here. So thank you.